Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call us to order. If you would, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doug, the floor is yours.
All right. At this time, I'll open the floor to nominations for council president.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Kevin Underwood for president.
I'll second.
Sorry? Is that a second? Is that what I heard? All right. So we've got a motion and a second for Kevin as president. Any other nominations? Go ahead and close the floor to nominations. All those in favor of Kevin Underwood for president of the council signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kevin Underwood for president. I'll open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I'll make a motion that we nominate, I nominate Jody Hamilton for vice president.
Second.
A motion and a second for Jody Hamilton as vice president. Any other nominations? I'll close the floor. All those in favor of Jody Hamilton as vice president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. First, next item is our auditor's financial report.
Okay, good morning. So we start off the year, we find our general fund cash balance at 19.5 million. This is an increase of about three and a half, 3.6 million over the starting balance last year, mainly due to unspent budget and interest earnings, which we have talked about several times since budget hearings. If we add in our projected miscellaneous revenue of about 30 million and the property tax levy at 97 percent, because that's about as close to our collection rate as we typically are. So 31 and a half million, take out an allowance for the circuit breaker of 1.6 million, gives us total funds available of 79,470,107 dollars. Take out encumbrances, which in front of you, you should have the encumbrance report for the general fund. These were slightly higher than they were last year at this time, at 340,737 dollars. And also subtract out the budget, which I am, for the purposes of this report, using 96 percent of our budget to be spent. I think at budget hearings, you settled on around 94, 95 percent, but just for the purposes of this, I'm sticking with 96 in case some of the open positions do get filled as the year goes on. And then also taking out the minimum balance change, which you increased to 11 million, gives you beginning net balance available for appropriation of 5,747,700, which, again, we were anticipating an increase in this area. So if you have any thoughts on any of the estimates, or we want to change things as we go on, we can do so, but that's where we sit right now. And you had no general fund appropriation requests for, or reduction requests for this meeting. Again, gave you the list of encumbrances by account, by department, for the general fund totaling 340,737 dollars. As far as other funds go, we had encumbrances totaling about 2.2 million dollars. Where we ended with revenue for 2023, just made a few notes. We are waiting on the municipal election reimbursement from Dayton and West Lafayette yet. I anticipate those coming in soon. I think we may need to look at, so juvenile detention reimbursement came in lower than expected, and it's the only area I saw where we may be budgeted a little bit too high for '24, but shouldn't impact overall revenue very much. So for the year, came in at 112.8 percent of what our projections were. And then on the fund balances, I don't have anything particular to point out there. We didn't have any funds that weren't grants that were negative, which is good. And when we finish January, I'll update the minimum fund balances that you changed at budget hearings. So that was all I had, other than to mention in the budget hearing minutes, page seven, I believe, I made a correction there to say that our uncommitted balance should be 11 million. The way it read in the minutes was 11.5 million. So that correction's already been made. If you would approve with that correction. That's it.
Okay. Any questions for Jennifer? Hearing none, we'll move on to our treasures report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year. We ended December with an account balance of 170,000, or 170,537,744.59, with an interest of 881,936.90. The average interest rate was still 5.59, and the weighted average rate was 5.59. We ended the year with a total interest of 8,323,670.4 cents, with 63 percent going to the general fund. The December Fed meeting gave signals to the end of rate hikes. So it looks to a series of cuts next year. So I will keep updating you on the rates for 2024. That's all I have.
Any questions? Hearing none. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our public comment about any agenda items before us this morning. Do I have any public comment concerning any of those agenda items? Seeing none. Next, we have our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from both the regular meeting in December and our budget hearings, which have the small change from 11 and a half to the 11 million that we had talked, that Jennifer talked about in her report.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda in minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Basham, to approve the consent agenda as presented with that one small change. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Additional appropriations, first, we have Circuit Court three, or Circuit Court, judge person, anybody from their court here. If not, do I have a motion for?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve for the Circuit Court appropriation of 74,000 dollars for the 9631 grant.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Fund 5632 grant appropriation in the amount of 74,000 dollars. Discussion.
So this is for the volunteer advocates for seniors or incapacitated adults? And judge person manages that, gets allocated through him, but it's actually for the Wabash Center.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the Fund 8895 for the magistrate.
Okay. I move to make appropriation, approve appropriation for the fund of 25,000 dollars for Fund 8895 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve Fund 8895 appropriation in the amount of 25,000 dollars. Discussion. Pat, were you wanting to talk about this one?
I've got one correction that should be noted, that Roda Weyers is not to represent anymore.
That's a good.
This is our incentive fund that we get yearly. Pays some bills for child support.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the 4D incentive fund appropriation.
I make a motion to approve appropriation for Title 4D Incentive Fund 8895 for 40,678 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the 4D Incentive Fund 8895 appropriation in the amount of 40,678 dollars. Discussion.
Same incentive fund, but it gets divided between us and the courts. So this is our share.
That's your share. All right. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have 9271 grant appropriation.
Make a motion. We approve, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I skipped ahead.
I was like, I was like, oh, Ben's jumping in.
I'm making a motion to approve the grant appropriation as presented.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Dolam, to approve the grant Fund 9271 grant appropriation for the amount of 93,291 dollars.
And this is the money we get from Indiana Prosecute Attorney's Council as passed by the state law to help us fund our high-tech crime unit for not only our county, but 13, total of 13 counties. First payment for the year. I think this year, we get a total of 265,000 dollars from the state.
Okay. Any questions, discussion?
So is this one of those accounts that will go negative over, because it's only, there's only, I notice there's only 47,000 currently in the account?
No. The state pays it, we get it four times a year, or?
I'm not sure on that one.
This is the first payment of the year.
We're appropriating for money we haven't gotten yet, and we're expecting it?
It's typical of most of these grants, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have CASA salary statement.
Make a motion. We approve the CASA salary statements for regular part-time attorney at 64,786 dollars, along with the full-time attorney for the amount of 92,551 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the salary statements for CASA. Discussion.
The personnel committee did approve these in October, on October 12.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have TEMA Fund 2546 appropriation.
Make the motion. We approve the TEMA Fund 2546 appropriation in the amount of 25,174 dollars.
Second.
I have a, is that you, Kathy?
Yes.
Sorry. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the Hazmat Fund 2546 appropriation in the amount of 25,174 dollars. Discussion. Good morning.
Good morning.
These are funds, the 18,000 is really funds that the team collects when they go out on spills. The 6,000 plus was part of a grant for the Hazmat team. Okay. Questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Fund 8431 grant appropriation.
Make the motion. We approve Fund 8431 grant appropriation in the amount of 19,850 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the Fund 8431 grant appropriation in the amount of 19,850 dollars. These are grant funds that Sharon applied for from the, from the state for training for Hazmat, for the Hazmat teams in the county. Okay. Questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Emergency Deployment Fund.
Make a motion. We approve the Emergency Deployment Fund 8726 appropriation in the amount of 19,543 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the Emergency Deployment Fund 8726 appropriation in the amount of 19,546 dollars, or is it 43?
43.
43. Sorry. Discussion. Yep. These are funds that roll over every year that really, we've had for some time for the task force, but it's really for our county to use. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the Hazmat Warning Fund.
Make a motion. We approve the Hazard Warning Fund 4940 appropriation in the amount of 33,569 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the Hazmat Hazard Warning Fund 4940 in the amount of 33,569 dollars. Again, these are funds that roll over every year. The commissioners fund this is basically the outdoor siren warning fund. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the Local Emergency Plan.
Make a motion. We approve the Local Emergency Plan Fund 1152 appropriation in the amount of 34,540 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the Local Emergency Plan Fund 1152 in the amount of 34,540 dollars. Discussion. It's truly a local emergency planning committee, and so it is the planning fund and not a plan fund, just to be correct. And this is money that we get from the state every year that is a reimbursement from our companies and businesses that have Tier Two hazardous materials. When they store so much, they have to pay a fund to the state, and this is a refund to us. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Thank you all. Thank you. Next, we have Community Corrections DOC.
Make a motion. We approve the DOC Community Transitions Fund 1123 appropriation in the amount of 102,698 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the DOC Community Transitions Fund 1123 in the amount of 102,698 dollars for community corrections. Discussion. Hi, Kelly.
Good morning. This is our reimbursement that we receive from DOC for housing individuals in our community transition program, where they are supervised for their last three to six months of their prison sentence with us so that we can transition them into the community, getting them a job and on their feet before they're released. This is our balance that's in our account as of today, or this year. We anticipate getting an additional 60,000 dollars in allocations, but we want to put this in appropriation. These are for, we use these funds to supplement anything unexpected that comes up.
Okay. Questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the Misdemeanor Fund Appropriation.
Make a motion. We approve the Misdemeanor Fund 1175 appropriation in the amount of 49,820 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Misdemeanor Fund 1175 appropriation in the amount of 49,820 dollars. Discussion.
This is the annual appropriation of what's left in the funds. We get funds every August, September from the state for supervising misdemeanor cases. We're just requesting this to pay for our fleet services.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Health Department Donation Fund Appropriation.
Make a motion. We approve the Health Department Donation Fund 4118 appropriation in the amount of 250 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Donation Fund 4118 appropriation in the amount of 250 dollars. Discussion.
My apologies. So this was a donation from IU Health for our Safe Sleep Program.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the Fund 9171 Grant Appropriation.
Make a motion. We approve the THFGI Fund 9171 Grant Appropriation in the amount of 15,000 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Fund 9171 Grant Appropriation in the amount of 15,000 dollars. Discussion.
This is funding for Gateway to Hope for our outreach and our program, all medical supplies.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Fund 1161 Appropriation.
Mr. President, I moved to table this appropriation in lieu that the process has not been completed for all the personnel committee to approve all positions listed inside this fund.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve, or to table this particular appropriation till our February meeting, I'm assuming, so that we can have all of the personnel committee pieces of the equation done. Any other, does it table? It can't be discussed, can it?
You know what? I don't know that. I don't think you'd get in trouble if you did discuss it.
Any questions or discussion, council?
The Personnel Committee will be meeting directly after this meeting to address.
Okay.
My concern is depending on the outcome of the Personnel Committee and the approval of positions being asked for to paid out of this fund, it may change numbers. And I don't want to have to approve now, then approve again, and then just kind of go back and forth. I'd rather get it right from the get-go. And maybe positions don't get approved, and then there's a different, you know, now the money is going to be shifted elsewhere. So that's, to me, the process hasn't been completed fully quite yet. And so I hate to approve a budget or the appropriation for the Healthy First Indiana without knowing all the facts. This is my two cents.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, all those in favor of tabling?
Do I get to say anything?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Councilman Murray. I tried to contact you last week to discuss this, and I didn't hear back from you. The problem is, certainly I understand the Roberts Rule of Order thing here, but we do have a problem. The salaries that are in there for the nurses will be used for typically accounting corrections. QCC will be leaving next week, so that will leave no medical. I just thought I'd mention that.
My comment regarding that Dr. Loomis did was kind of here, next thing, is, to my understanding, those two positions haven't been created by the commissioners yet. So it's hard to allow for fiscal support if those positions haven't been created by the commissioners from a process standpoint.
And so you're saying that in an hour and a half from now, they'll be approved if they go through the meeting?
They have to go through the commissioners' meeting.
Okay.
If I'm correct in process.
Okay.
And I was trying to get into the research and talk to a variety of people, probably get back to you.
You missed me, the physician.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Kelly.
I don't, I don't know, I don't have the staff to be able to pass meds three times a day. So I feel like things have been done in an unfair order. I realize that things can be, need to be approved and need to go in the proper chain, but we were given the go-ahead, and the contract has already been canceled. Tracy Brown facilitated that. So in that situation, I feel like we need to be prepared and have the funds allocated to be able to hire nurses.
What is the date that the PC or QCC?
The 12th.
12th.
And so that's a soft stop. The hard stop is the 19th, but the 12th is where we're already starting the transition. We've been working over there with the nurse practitioners that we're bringing onboard, the other nurses and the pharmacy to get things, you know, up to where Kelly's, up to Kelly's standards and our standards medically and legally. I would suggest, I think, under Roberts Rule of Orders, Doug, that you can certainly approve this pending the outcome of the meeting. Would that be something for the county council to consider?
That was my next question. When is the next commissioners' meeting? Is it in a week? Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Which would then, would that give you enough time from a position standpoint?
So we have, we have people that are ready to go. So we're.
I think, I think they're getting ready to be repositioned in QCC's organization. And we've actually been filling in. Kayla and I were there filling in last week.
And the money for the community corrections nursing staff, the two positions on the salary statement here on down, is paid for out of this Healthy First Indiana grant?
Yes. We had talked about that about six weeks ago, where we're going to move that from corrections. And let me just back up so the rest of the committee knows what I'm talking about. My plan before Jason left was to move those medical positions under the Health Department, because we have the provider number for malpractice coverage. That's somewhat important. And as a result of that, had corrections kept those two nursing positions that we were going to, that was proved already, that you guys approved, the malpractice would have gone through the ceiling because you don't have a provider number. That's me. So by moving them, just copying and pasting them to, from QC, or from TCC over to Health Department, now allows them, under that coverage for the malpractice premium, to drop to 125 dollars a year, somewhere in there, give or take 50 bucks. So that's all been set, and I thought was approved by you guys. The funding, we took out of the general fund, as you and I talked about, and put it into the HFI to save the county money.
Correct.
200,000.
Correct.
Okay.
And we were not allocated, so the 300,000 dollars for QCC was pulled from the budget in order for the Health Department to take over. So the, that was paid out of public safety funds, and so that was removed from our budget. So we don't have any money to pay for nurses if we even wanted to extend our contract. We'd have to come back and ask for that as well.
And supplies. We've already ordered medications and supplies, so we have onsite care for these folks.
Kelly, I do think you have 300,000 in your budget still. That part was not removed. It was talked about being removed, but it wasn't.
Okay, because that was not.
And I think everyone's on the same page as far as all that was supposed to happen, but the commissioners have not created the positions. So payroll doesn't have positions from which to pay.
Process-wise, Doug, is there anything we can do to kind of be in the middle?
I mean, it's at your discretion, I think. I mean, so the, I mean, is it the, I know they're all tied together, but is it the salary statement approval that's kind of the big thing?
Yeah, and the salary statement is paid for out of the grant fund where it's on, up front now.
I mean, I think you could approve the appropriation request and then approve the salary statement contingent on approval by the commissioners, if you wanted to. I mean, I know you want to be careful because, you know, you've got sort of an emergency here. You don't want, in the future, a bunch of other departments to start having their own emergencies. And so, I mean, and just because you do it here doesn't mean you have to do it the next time, but that's, I think, probably your biggest concern in terms of just being legal. I don't think it's any problem to approve the state, do your work approving the statement contingent on the commissioners. Now, if the commissioners approve something, you know, different, then you'd have to revisit it, I guess.
Okay. Jennifer, if we approve the grant appropriation as it's presented today, and the Personnel Committee comes back and makes adjustments, could they? Committee comes back and makes adjustments, could they then come back and ask for an amended or updated version or grant appropriation? Would that comply with what you need for your office?
And I would be agreeable to that from the, I think that would cover our needs just in case. If you approve it today, I'll just come back, or you can come back and say, just take it back, or whatever, it isn't approved by the commissioners. We just need it today so that we can continue the transition that's been in effect for four weeks now. I appreciate that consideration.
So, quick question. So today is the 9th. When is the last day that QCC provides service to you?
The 19th.
The 19th.
The 19th is the hard stop.
Transition on the 12th.
The transition starts on the 12th.
Well, no, the transition has already started. The meeting, Tracy and I are having a meeting with Abby and Lisa from QCC tomorrow. So if we were in position, we were going to transition this Friday. But I asked, I asked both of them, Abby and Lisa, the co-owners of QCC, if they would respectfully give us just a hard stop on the 19th, but they need to move their people soon. I got a notification last night, I can show it to you, where they're already transitioning the folks that are there to another facility, in the jail facility. So I think they're assuming we're going to be ready to go, the 12th. This will hold it up until the 19th.
I would like to add, I just believe the hardship that this is going to create outweighs the process. And as what was mentioned, we can individually kind of assess any future request. So I would like to ask Councilman Murray to withdraw the table, and then let's put it back on the table to be voted today.
I will withdraw the table.
Okay.
And I kind of didn't jump in, but there was never actually any motion to consider to start with. So the tabling, I mean, technically what probably should have happened was a motion to approve, followed by the motion to table, table withdrawn, motion's reinstated. So, I mean, I think it's clear in the minutes what's happening here. You've made your motion. I think, I think that's probably sufficient. And then procedurally, you just want to, somebody make a motion to move forward with the agenda item.
Make the motion to move forward, please.
Okay, I have a, do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. I've got a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilman Murray to approve the grant appropriation 1161 for the Healthy First Indiana Fund in the amount of $2,158. Now, discussion about that.
So I'd like to understand a little bit more about what this, this is a fund that I understand was coming from the state, it's new money. Can you talk a little bit about what you're planning to do with the money, and what are we doing different than we did last year?
That's a great question, Councilman Dolan, thank you for that. This is part of what I think, having spoken to the Governor's Office multiple times, and that was Jerome Adams, Dr. Adams had just called me a few minutes ago wanting to know the outcome of this meeting. And he's coming into town in a couple of weeks, but he wanted to know how it was going. He's following up on a lot of these different counties that are in this very situation. But this is the, the Governor's probably magnum opus, if you will. I mean, it's his legislation that he's going out with a bang by revisiting the problems that we had during the pandemic, where, you know, the Health Department was always the organization that told us to boil our water. Now we realize that it was underfunded, it was really understaffed, and it was really in a difficult situation, as we all know, politically and medically. And so what we have done this last year and a half since I took over was to try to restructure the Health Department into different, if you look at the flow chart, into different small communities where we have more of a flow, like you wouldn't in a regular business model. And I've passed that on to most of you who've seen it. And as a result of that, we were able to fund this with the HFI, the Health First Indiana that the Governor put. Different counties, you know, got different amounts based on their needs assessment at the time and population-based. So what we're doing is we're looking how to expand that. So to answer your question a little bit more fully, and I need, I think I needed that background information. For example, our Fetal Infant Mortality Review Committee, we are funding them through this. In fact, if you look at the flow chart, we have taken all the salaries out of the general fund, and it's being funded by Health First Indiana. So that's separate. We're taking my salary out of the general fund, saving the county $65,000. We are taking the nurses from, you know, the typically county corrections out of the general fund, funding it with this money, with the intent of building a platform that we can then really move forward in 2025, when the money that we're supposed to be getting, I'm hearing, is going to be around 5 million. And we'll be able to develop those programs even more with that money. So it's really a start. We're also, we're also developing with that money, we're using it to develop Gateway to Hope, which is our syringe service program, which has become a very small part. If I'm rambling, just stop me at any time, please. But the syringe program is a very small slice of this. Now we have wound care, as Councilman Vernon saw. We have a nurse who was a professor at Purdue who specializes in that, she's there. We have a full pharmacy. We have a medical assisted treatment program. We have a clothing bank, and we have a free clinic that we started. All of those are being funded by Health First Initiative, so none of this is coming out of the general fund. And we have some preliminary numbers with Kerry Costello, and I've been working on this. We've seen what we hope is a dramatic drop in our opioid deaths in the county for 2023. Last year, we were at a record high of 58, and we're looking now that it's probably going to be closer to 44, probably a 25% decrease. And it just happens to coincide with when we opened Gateway to Hope at the New Ferry Street Building and offered all these services. And so as we started this, we were funding it out of other funds, anticipating the money coming from the HFI fund. And there's more, so.
I personally would like to learn a lot more, maybe in another meeting, or maybe one-on-one, you and I can get together, but there's, I think, I also think the public might want to know everything that's happening as well, so.
I agree, and I just wanted to wait until we got through the administrative and the political process before we really launch that.
Thank you.
No, but thank you for your question.
I think, Dr. Loomis, thanks to you and to the Health Department staff. I mean, when you, when you look at, when you look at this, I mean, very innovative and moving forward. I think where we all have a little, an issue, I think, is because of the process. You know, it's government, and I know, working in the medical field, you know, you just can make quick decisions, and you do it, and it's done.
Don't remind me.
And that's, I think that's where, right now, the process, there are processes that we have to follow. And, you know, and I will vote for this today, but I think that we just need to realize, and I know the frustration of coming today and hearing this discussion, but there are processes that we need to follow. And now setting, we don't, I don't want to set a precedent that we all have other fires that we have to put out, and we have to continue to do this, because we've set forth policies and procedures. But, I mean, I think that, you know, the innovation that we see, the money and the services, and looking at our outcomes, and I think that that's what we're all striving for, our good outcomes, which we're starting to see. So I think that's what the council is talking about today, so.
No, I appreciate that.
Is the process.
No, I understand the process, and I'm really not frustrated. I appreciate the process very much. It would be communication that would be beneficial to me. Okay, I've been a physician for 40 years, okay? I've been a physician in the state for the same amount of time, and a little bit of communication would be helpful. I think that I made that very clear at the last meeting that we had, that everybody has my cellphone. All the participants in the syringe service program have my cellphone. And I always say, if I don't answer it, the battery's dead, or I am. And so far, it's been the battery. So I think that to be able to pick up a phone and call, at least that's the way that I did it while I was practicing, and in the two businesses that I owned, you pick up the phone and you call if there's a problem. We don't do something like this. But I do apologize, I don't mean to be out of line, but I appreciate all of you understanding the need for public health. Thank you for your comment. Councilman Richard, thank you for your support on this. You know, we will, we will do the right thing. I think the proof is in the pudding. And it's not me, please, it's the team. I have, I don't think I've ever been in an organization where I've had a better team and people around, all the people in the community that are wrapped around this. And I think I can say this on the record, I, the health writer for the New York Times is coming in to interview us on the 23rd. She got wind that, of what we're doing here with public health and with the Governor's Initiative, and I think she's interviewing him today, in fact. And she's coming in to interview us, and I've invited Councilperson Vernon, and I'd invite any of you others to meet with her and tell her what we're doing as a team. This is a team effort, and it's starting to work. And I'm as old as all you guys, you two probably as well, but I think that, I think we understand what the benefits of this are. This is not a conservative or liberal statement. This is public health, and I need your support to make this work. I've got the team. It ain't me, it's the people behind me, trust me. Thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appropriation for the Fund 1161 appropriation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the salary statements.
Make a motion, we approve the salary statements as presented.
Second.
Do you want those contingent on, those are the ones that need Commissioner approval?
Make a motion, we approve the salary statements as presented, contingent on ones needing Commissioner approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. There's something else, Jennifer?
Is the health officer's salary correct? I guess I'm not clear on what totals the $675,000 or the $112 for the appointed, so I'm wondering if these are correct.
So the maintenance and trust funds are gone, closed as of December 31, and these move over to the HFI, should be paid from it.
Correct.
That's why it's separate from the other. The, she's asking about, so we have health officer here, and then we have it up here. So it will change, but for now, it's here.
Okay.
And then it will change when the new funds are approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Council, questions or discussion? So we've got a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the salary statements contingent upon Commissioner approval for those that are still outstanding in that regard. Hearing nothing else, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved, they are approved. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Ben, am I correct that you were with the, that included the public health nurses as well, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Just because those are the two that are still outstanding. Okay. Very good. Next, we have Highway Salary Statement.
Mr. President, let me get my cane first. Mr. President, I would entertain and listen to the Highway Department for the salary statement for Assistant Director of, up to $45 an hour.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the salary statement for Part-Time Assistant Director up to $45 per hour. Discussion.
We're all getting old, too. As retirements come, this just gives us the flexibility to hire people through this method so that when someone is retiring, we can have them in office, training, together before we lose the valuable people that are retiring. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay. Any discussion or questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Next, we have Fund 8405 appropriation.
Motion for approval for Safety Action Plan Fund 8405 grant appropriation in the amount of $199,900.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Hamilton, a second from Councilman Murray to approve the Safety Action Fund appropriation, Fund 8405, in the amount of $199,900. Discussion.
This is for the completion of the Safety Action Plan, which will give the NPOs eligible for the federal safe streets for all of the funding.
Okay. Questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the Sheriff Misdeponent Fund appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we approve Misdeponent Fund 1175 appropriation, other supplies in the amount of $20,000.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the Misdeponent Fund 1175 appropriation in the amount of $20,000. Discussion.
Good morning, young people. This is our funds we get from the Department of Corrections. We'll use these for all the supplies and stuff in the jail, mattresses, uniforms, and things like that.
Okay. Questions or discussion from council?
That's supposed to be... No, I was, I was told that was for the mattresses and stuff. Terry, do you know, did she? We purchased... Yeah. Yeah, it's for the, let me, I'll double check, it was for the jail. We purchased enough ammunition last year for three years. So she told me it was for mattresses and jail supplies. If you want us to buy more bullets, we'll buy them, but I think we're okay.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions?
I told you, you guys are the young ones, I'm the old one.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have K-9 Support Fund.
I'll make a motion that we approve K-9 Support Fund 401 to appropriation, other supplies, $1,900, other professional services, 19, for a total of $3,800.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the K-9 Support Fund 4012 in the amount of $3,800. Discussion.
That's for vet bills, food, things for the K-9s.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioners' Fund 1237 appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Opioid Restricted Fund 1237 appropriation, other professional services totaling $444,140.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the Opioid Restricted Fund 1137 appropriation in the amount of $444,000. Discussion.
Good morning. This is the opioid settlement money. If you recall, part of that money is restricted, part of it's unrestricted. This is the restricted portion, and it's also the 2023 allocation. So the, we'll be coming forth later in the year for an appropriation for the unrestricted as well as the 2024 allocation, which will be significantly smaller than the 2023.
Okay. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the...
Commissioner Byers is doing the next one.
Oh, he's doing this one, okay. We have Fairgrounds Construction Lit Fund 4918 appropriation.
I make a motion for the Construction Fairground 2018 Lit Revolving Fund 4818 appropriation in the amount of $26,383.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the Construction Fairgrounds 2018 Revolving Fund 4818 appropriation in the amount of $26,383.
Basically, it cleans the bond out. So it sweeps the bond, we got, this is the last of the money that we have in the bond, so it's to be used in assorted projects or at the fairgrounds.
Okay. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Salary Statement for Board of Elections.
I make a motion that we approve the Salary Statement for the Board of Elections in the amount of $52,296.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolan, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the Salary Statement for Board of Elections in the amount of $52,96. Discussion.
I want to thank you. I have a long, you've asked to approve it, and I had a lot...
You've asked to approve it, and I had a lot to say, but I think you've obviously read my letter and you have an understanding, so maybe I'll just leave it an opportunity if you want to ask any other questions.
Julia, how did you... What percent increase is this?
8%.
Okay. All the others are 5% when they go from initial to year one. Is there a reason why that needs to be 8%, whereas countywide, the rest is 5%?
The main reason is, I put in the letter that I sent you, is that there's other discrepancies as well with this job. This is just a quick way to make sure that we retain the good help that we have going forward, but we will be going to request more change later in the salary itself.
I'm not opposed to the increase. I'm opposed to it being 8%, everyone else is 5%. From a... Like I was talking to Jennifer earlier, could I ask the question? Just that the natural... After year one, it goes up.
So you're looking at the special jobs. The other jobs such as like Comet 3, Comet 4, Comet 5, they all have raises 1, 3, 5, 7. In these special jobs, there's only a one-year raise. And so if you look at it overall, all of the jobs, that's... There's a lot more than an 8% increase when you go through many, many years. Germany himself, he's been here since 2020, and he's never had any type of increase. Yet, Comet 3, we lost our key worker with this job to go into a Comet 3 position because within one year, he will be making more. Not only will he have less hours, less responsibility, he won't be working weekends or nights. He will be making more in this position. And so I think there's a great discrepancy.
Jennifer, does that fall in line? I mean, this would not...
Are you planning to have it reclassified out of the SO occupation or the special occupation categories?
No, not necessarily. I think that's a discussion for later and to speak with the personnel, the group.
I'm just... I'm hearing from a new HR director questions, you know, of 10 years ago. How did this happen and why did this happen? And that's kind of the concern is that if this one falls on the SO chart and it's 8% versus all the other positions being a differentiation of 5%, that's, I think, the only question was where the... Where that percentage came from and how does it fit in line with other positions that are on the special occupation chart?
And Julie, I may have just misunderstood you, so I want clarification. And you said this position, Germany has never received an increase before...
Not in longevity, no.
Not longevity, okay. But the normal, whatever we would approve, okay.
Yes.
I have a question. First of all, how much money are we talking extra? And then, so if we approve the eight, is it going to be five or back to five the next year since what Councilwoman Hamilton said? We haven't had a raise for a couple of years. Is it going to go back next time you come in front of us? Is it going to go back to five or is it going to be eight?
Well, I just want to talk about right now because the other thing that we're talking about, I don't know where that's going to go. I don't know where the... What the Personnel Committee is going to suggest on that, but I can tell you what the current pay right now is, $48,423. What I'm requesting is that once someone has served one year... And by the way, when they work one election, they know whether or not they like the job. So if somebody stays after the first election, I know that we've got someone who is loyal, who's dedicated, who's able to do this job because it's very, very stressful, very, very time-consuming. It would bring it to $52,296. That's the 8% difference. So basically, from 48 to 52. So after one year, the 8% and then plus whatever then the county gives is an increase, a yearly increase? Right, there is no other increase after that one year of longevity. When you talk about, we need to look at this position. Are you looking at 2024? Are you looking at this position this year and doing any reclassification? I don't know if it's possible. I would love to do that, but I don't know if it's possible. It's 2024. I remember what it was like in 2020. I don't know if there's going to be time to do that. And you've got... The rules have been changed, from my understanding that we can only bring that up during... Before the budget hearings. I do not think it's possible in 2024 to approach that.
Does this require Personnel Committee approval or no?
I was told it did not.
I would rather Sadie answer that, maybe. I don't know if Sadie can answer that and...
Can you ask the question again?
Does the 8% wage increase being asked, does that require Personnel Committee approval or no?
In all technicality, no. We have done that in the past when we have done any sort of change to the grid, that it's gone through Personnel Committee first. If it's just a budgetary item, it can go straight to counsel without Personnel Committee. It's just not the norm of the process.
With hearing that, I would like to just share my support for this, knowing what Julie and her staff go through in an election, especially for the 2024 year coming. And I believe this is in line to help retain and have the personnel to do the job.
I did owe that.
If we went to the 5%, would that be more amenable to the council? And that would be in line with any other special position that goes... You know, the way that it is currently is they do not get any raise for longevity, and I just don't think that's right. Because they do get more skills as they go through an election cycle, and they do become more valuable to us as they go through an election cycle. But I also understand, like, why 8%? Like, we need to be consistent also. So I guess that's... I'm willing to change my motion for that if we need to do that. I don't know what that would come out to, and I have to do the math.
I'm fully supportive of 5%. At 8%, just organizationally, I struggle being different than others from a consistent standpoint.
I would support that too, but I would also ask for you and Sadie to get together because I think it is important that these are looked at. And if there's reclassifications that we should be doing, then maybe we... To help with this in the future, then we should look at that.
What would the...
I agree.
What would the difference be if it was at 5 versus 8?
On 5, it comes out to $50,844.
I will amend my motion to $50,844.
I'll second that.
Okay, so are you withdrawing your previous motion, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. Jody, are you okay with that? So the amended or the changed motion from Councilwoman Dolam with the second from Councilwoman Hamilton would be for the salary statement of $50,844. Now discussion on that. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And the reason I just want to add is I believe it should be at 52,290, I believe. So that's the reason. It's not against the raise at all. It's just, I really believe that it should be as they had asked for.
I'm going to declare it has passed.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, time for... Anybody have committee reports?
I'm sorry, there's just one...
Oh.
We had asked that it could be retroactive to January 1st. Okay, thank you.
Do you need to make a motion?
Probably.
Yeah. Okay, can you... I make a motion to make the salary retroactive to January 1st, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton to make that change retroactive to January 1st. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Okay, committee reports.
Just as a note, the Personnel Committee has decided that in year 2024 that we will be meeting right after our council meeting to address any changes to be brought forth before the Personnel Committee. So it's going to be a consistent meeting.
Okay. Any other reports to be brought forward? Other business, we have a presentation. Kathy, you want to introduce?
Yes, I'll introduce this presentation. And Joe Wade, if you want to come forward. She's got a slideshow presentation from us. As we all know, in the year 2021, the state passed Senate Bill 381, which changed the amount of inkeepers' tax money, the way that it was distributed in the county. Currently, Historic Profits Town gets 10%, Wabash River Enhancement Corporation, 10%, Greater Lafayette Commerce, 10%, Visitors, 40%, DNR, 10%, and the County Council receives 20%. The county receives 20%. As you all know, '22 and '23, we funded a portion to Greater Lafayette Commerce in the amount of approximately $475,000. And we're moving forward with $500,000 out of this account going to them. There is a balance in this account currently that the council, in the Senate bill, it shall be distributed as determined by the county, the fiscal body. And there's the amount of $487,000. This money is supposed to be used for economic development. The board, which is a 13-member board of the Visitors Commission, which I'm on the commission, I'm the council representative, and David Byers, our commissioner, is the president of this board. Our board, Joe has brought a proposal to the board. The board voted unanimously that yes, she should come to the council to fund this particular project. And so today is just like when Greater Lafayette Commerce came to us to give us a slideshow presentation of what the thoughts are, and then it would be next month when we would pass a resolution appropriating the money. So today, Joe will give us a little presentation.
Thank you, Kathy.
Greetings, howdy, howdy. Great tourism weather out today, isn't it? Anyway, this Destination Asset Needs Study has been done across the United States by a variety of different destination marketing organizations. Fort Wayne has a completed study. They haven't released, and yet... And South Bend is in the middle of it. We've looked at other companies and this CSL company seems to be the best to do this kind of study. I will... If we could go the next slide. I mean, I think you all know what we do, but Visit Lafayette, West Lafayette is the driver of the visitor economy. We provide support and promotion, marketing to the visitor, the tourism sector. The tourism sector of our community is really hard to divide out. It is everything that helps create more positive impact for our whole community, a ripple effect that makes our community more vibrant, more dynamic. It supports those restaurants that the locals like to go to and the festivals and all of that. So it makes our community a great place to visit, live, work, or play. And I mean, we will share our information, our brochures, with everybody. We have one of the best, I think the best photo library that helps promote our community and video library. And I think that we have lots to promote. The next slide will talk about this. So CSL is Convention, Sports, and Leisure Group that has, as I said, performed a number of these Destination Asset Needs for the Lafayette, West Lafayette community, or for all over the place. But we would like them to do it for us. We are very impressed by how they have done a really good job of bringing all the stakeholders together. We don't own these facilities. We don't own anything, really. We just promote. We want a group of stakeholders to come together and be engaged in how we can best use the properties that are currently here, the properties that will... We could build upon the properties that might come. Venues in general, convention, sports, and leisure-type venues is what we're looking at. So... And they're on the same wavelength as us as far as trying to enhance the area as a place to visit, live, work, or play. So, yes. So it increases tourism, economic activity in the community to support these things. It supports businesses, creates more employment opportunities, and it bolsters the tax revenues that are created, improves the quality of life. And we... Their approach is that we need to look at all our venues in not a standstill sort of, you know, what's happening for the future? What can we do for our long-term growth to make this a more dynamic community of venues in our community? So he... The... This Rick Cutting Miller, who has... Is the lead for this study, has suggested that we have a 10-member steering committee. We have a list of our suggestions. We're not locked into, but my board agrees with these suggestions so that we bring a variety of the leadership in our community together to look at these... Or to be part of the committee, this steering committee, to lead us forward with this. I am asking for the $100,000 for their professional fee, the $12,000 for their travel expenses, $25,000 for just general expenses, meeting expenses, and if we have to rent a bus to take people around or that sort of thing. And so I am requesting $115,000 for... To do this study. So I guess I'd... We... I'm happy to send everyone that doesn't have it already a complete proposal, but I'd be happy to answer questions on this type of study. Not that I have all the answers at all, but I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Can you talk about what other cities they've done this for?
I'm sorry, what other...
What other cities or what other areas they've done this for, this type of work?
So in Indiana, it's Fort Wayne in our study. It's like... If I said it without looking, I would probably say all the wrong ones. They have... Lexington, Kentucky has done this. I think you said South Bend, Fort Wayne. South Bend is in the middle of the... Or just starting the process. It's about a 14-week. Lansing, Michigan, Palm Springs, California. I mean, they do small and large. Portland, Oregon. And I... They have information about those communities in the proposal that if you'd... I would be happy to forward those proposals to all of you if you would like to read them. And talks about who the... Their team is as well.
Nothing like this has been done from the Greater Lafayette Commerce or any of the local cities or Purdue University? So it wouldn't be a duplication of work already being done or have to?
No, no, not that I'm aware of at all. And even if it was done, well, I'd like to say before my time, but I've been around since DIRTT was formed. So... So, so I, none that I'm aware of. But, yeah, and they would look at the facilities, and from what I'm seeing from other studies, they would look at the public facilities as well as the private facilities. Obviously, we can't throw, throw money into those private facilities, but maybe we could assist them with, like, business loans or something to make their facility more usable in our community, or, you know, to, for them to look at. Currently, like, I say, the fairgrounds is what other opportunities might be at the fairgrounds? Is it the best venue we possibly have for esports? And if that would be the case, then do we need to drop more electrical or whatever sort of thing? Those are the sorts of things, besides, I think they, they have real innovative ideas, too, that are totally different from what another community has done. And they tend, they go to other cities and give you examples of what somebody else has done with that sort of facility that's, that wouldn't be in competition with somebody next door to us, so.
Does the study or the information that you have show any outcomes, year two, three, four, five years down the road after the study's been completed, of, say, Palm Springs, Lansing, Michigan, Lexington, Kentucky, of any improvement or increase in visitor traffic? Does that, do they have that data available?
I, I believe they have, let's see, but I haven't.
And if you just want to send that later, I'd be curious to read it.
Right. But, yeah, I, I don't know how specific all of it is, but they have, I mean, they have some residence numbers and all kinds of things like that in it. And he's real easy to work with. If there's any specific questions we have that he can share with us, I'm sure he would share additional as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Jennifer, can, can you go back to the slide for the proposed committee? I think it was towards, okay. The suggested steering committee. When you look at the different areas in our county, each one of those areas has currently a representative on our board that looked at this proposal, has looked at this proposal over the last quarter. So just as an FYI on that. And then the other thing, Joe, do you think you could please send your slideshow and the proposal to Jennifer, and then she can distribute it to the council members?
She actually has the slideshow, but I'd be happy to do whatever works best.
Okay, and the proposal, and to send that, and then she can send it, and then if there's any of the counselors that would like to read that, that's available.
And Joe, you might have, you started to say it. What was, what is the timeframe to complete?
Like fourteen weeks. It, it, and, I mean, they're busy, so the, the proposal has the breakdown of the, of the timeline and, and what they would be presenting and all of that. And then there's, of course, there's things you can buy into afterwards. Yeah, of course. So it's about a fourteen, and it looks like, I, I mean, without pushing, I know we need to take some time and you guys read everything, but that they would be available to start in February. January would have been a tough time, as busy as they were. So if it were to get approved in February, it sounds like they would be ready to kick it right into action.
Any other questions or discussion?
I don't necessarily need the answers now, I was just thinking of what a resolution would look like. The one that's, I anticipate the money's coming out of that twenty percent.
Uh-huh.
To.
No.
And then, is there enough money on hand? Is it one minute, second?
Yes.
Just want to make sure there's no innkeeper's taxes didn't come in like we thought. We got other commitments, and it doesn't sound like that.
All right, thanks. And Jennifer did do a projection as to what it would look like, even giving the five hundred thousand dollars to Greater Lafayette Commerce for 2024.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom?
Just a suggestion. You know, this funding is unlike, you know, our typical funds that are allocated to the county. This is the community's money. It's just this board is alloc, is the one who designated. So I would suggest letters of support from both cities to make sure, you know, to have them on board in the process, similarly to the marketing request, that, you know, that they, they have, you know, some say in it, because, you know, that's how we do things here, so, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on, we've got unfinished business for council as far as appointments and assignments. So if there's anyone that would like to ask for a change in that regard, please let me know, or Jennifer.
You want to let you know right now?
No. We can do it after the meeting if you want.
Okay.
We don't have to do it right here and now.
I'm not on the sewer district anymore, so whatever.
Okay.
John, what's your PC?
So, is, is there a representative?
Yeah, it was elected president, about a year ago. After we were there for thirteen years, we decided to let them run their own. That's, that's where I built the municipal waste treatment system. It was recommended that, by the attorneys, they, they run their own show down there in Romney. So I'm not on that district anymore.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. You got that noted, Jennifer? Any new business for us this morning? Commissioner FYI? Nothing? Any public comment to come before us this morning? Our next meeting is February thirteenth. If nothing else, I'll take the last motion.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Have fun in Florida.